All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and get to the meeting. Call of order. I'd like to thank you everybody for being here with us tonight. Appreciate you being here in attendance. Just a couple of announcements before we dive into the agenda. First is, one exciting thing that the Chamber of Commerce does every year is a youth leadership program where they take some rising juniors and seniors that show signs of leadership and walk through and get a chance to learn a lot about their community. One of the requirements is that they attend a public meeting, whether it be the county, city, school, to participate in the county meeting. And I know we have one here tonight with us who shares the name of one of our post commissioners, but we've got Mr. Jack Tatum that is here with us. One of their requirements is he has to have his picture made that he shows up at the meeting. So Jack, if you would, come up.
Yes, sir.
We'll let you stand in the front. We'll stand behind, but thank you for being here. Thank you for participating.
I'm sorry.
Come right here. This is where we do it, right here.
I'm gonna do it right here.
We're gonna build this podium up higher in the future.
Okay, one, two, three. I think I'll do it.
All right. Jack, thank you. One other thing on the announcement side, as we're going through that, I know the Chamber of Commerce is they're running the youth leadership program. The Chamber's also gonna be hosting a town hall meeting on October the 8th. It will be an informational town hall meeting about the T-SLOSS referendum that's gonna be on about in November, so we'll have a panel that's there to discuss and answer any questions that are there. It'll be October the 8th at 6:30 PM at the Junior High School Auditorium. I know the Chamber's about to start sharing some information on that. I just wanna make sure to pass that information. If anybody has questions, that's a great time. You can come and either learn it at the beginning or have a chance to ask the question that you may have when it's going on. So make sure that we get that out. As we dive into our agenda, I have asked Mr. Charles Reece if he would lead us in our invocation and prayer. And then following that, our youth leadership participant, Mr. Jack Tatum, is gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's all bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, just first off, for allowing us to live another day in a land of living. Thank you for your new grace and new mercies. Father God, we ask that you bestow your guidance and wisdom to our commissioners, leaders of this Pickens County community, that their decisions, Lord, will reflect peace, justice, and compassion and prosperity for all citizens here in this community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I do have one item I'd like to make as an amendment, more as a precautionary amendment, and it'd be based on the board's decision, but if we could, under item 10C, under the action items, add item C, it would be the consideration and approval of the abandonment of a portion of Winston Road. I know that we have the public hearing that's gonna occur at the beginning of the meeting. But that way, if there is an opportunity that you wanna move forward with that, I wanna make sure that that item is something. So we'll put that in as item C on the agenda. Any other amendments that need to be made? With that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Two seconds.
A second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda is to go to our consent agenda. Consent agenda, we had three different proclamations during the month of August. The first was proclamation from Mayor Jasper and myself declaring Marble Festival as October the 5th and 6th, Georgia Marble Festival Days in Pickens County and the city of Jasper. The second was Recovery Month for 2024. This was a statewide effort for Georgia Recovers in Communities that was led by the State of Georgia and a bus tour that they were going from county to county. And we were able to join in a proclamation of September as Georgia Recovers Month in Community. And the third was Constitution Week. Constitution Week was the week of September 17th through the 23rd. So we were able to sign a proclamation on that on August the 28th. Those are our three proclamations. We'll make sure we place those in the record. Next item on our agenda is public hearing number one. We do have two public hearings tonight. The first is a downzoning request. Public hearing number one is a request in changing land use classification from Mr. Anthony Gunter on behalf of Charles and Ann Gunter, Pin Hook Road, requesting to move 1.32 acres from RR to Ag. So I'll ask Mr. Reece if he would.
Good evening, Commissioners. The case before you is referenced as RZ-19085. The applicant is Anthony Gunter on behalf of Charles and Gunter. The address of subject property is located on Pin Hook Road in Ranger. And the request is to rezone, zone said property, the 1.32 acre parcel to be combined with adjoining 30.89 acre AG parcel. Currently, the subject park parcel is owned RR of Rural Residential. See here, current survey and the proposed survey. The property is located within the character area of Rural Residential. And it meets the, all of the requirements that is envisioned for that area. Recommendation is, the staff recommends approving these downzoning requests from Rural Residential RR to Agricultural AG for parcel 037, 025, 001. This is based on alignment with agricultural land use objectives, compatibility with surrounding areas, minimum impact on infrastructure, along with the condition that the 1.32 acre parcel be combined with the adjoining 30.89 acre AG parcel. Requesting rezoning is a reasonable and justified action that serves the interest of both the applicants and the community. Facilitating the combination of the two parcels into a single agricultural designation would eliminate the subject parcel's current non-conforming status. The applicant will also be able to utilize the land effectively for agricultural purposes, ensuring the area sustain, its sustainable use of resources. Any questions?
I don't believe Mr. Gunter is here unless he's came in and I didn't catch him. But I would like to open up for any public comments, if anyone has any public comments, or against me, to make sure we provide equal power on both sides, but without that, we can hear With that, we will close this public hearing. Thank you, Charles, for providing the information and bringing it. We do have that as an item. That's what we get into the rezones portion of the agenda to be considered at that point in time. So we will put that under item 10 on the agenda. Next public hearing is a consideration of abandonment of a portion of Winston Road. We have had an applicant that has requested an abandonment for a small portion of Winston Road. I've asked Mr. Wes Frye, who works and handles our right-of-way, the variety of other tasks, he's the sole and right-of-way guy, to come and give him a presentation to show the area that was there. This has been advertised. Both in the media, letters have been sent to adjacent parcel property owners of the asylum, West Place, advertise about this public hearing. So that's particular.
You go to the next one. It is a flat, there's gonna be a flat showing, but we'll just go back.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
A flat, a few public area, burial, proposed deed, our description of proposed deed, and the one to Mr. Allen Brooks and the one to ETC. Okay, the next slide. The proposed abandonment would be to Richard Allen Brooks Jr., trust me, the revocable trust of Richard Allen Brooks Jr. And the other one would be to, as the person, as the grantor, would be Pickens County, Georgia. I think we missed one. It would be ETC, right. Grantees would be Richard Allen Brooks Jr. and ETC. Okay, we have, it is a landline 48 of 23rd District, 2nd Section, Pickens County. The road was moved a while back, and this was left from the moving of it. This is the detailed description of the property going into Mr. Brooks, and the other one is the detailed description going into the property of ETC. All right, now we have a survey, and it's, as you can see, it does not show much of the landline line, but the landline line goes due north, and that is all property of Mr. Brooks. And then ETC is the little square on the bottom left, and it has half that road going to ETC. And there is a shaded portion from the aerial view from the tax map. As you can see, the road now goes into, it has a backwards L shape.
All right, so the highlighted red portion is the portion we're considering the abandonment of, right here, behind the store.
Correct.
That's very important.
We have a large survey. If y'all can see it.
I believe. Everybody has it now.
Yeah.
As well.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Thank you, sir. I think Mr. Brooks is here, and Mr. Frye, I don't know if y'all have anything in addition that you'd like to add to what Wes presented. I'll give you a chance. I know you've never passed up a chance to talk.
No. Mr. Frye, as we call him, he laid that pretty good. I mean, it's just, you see the new road up there that comes off 53, it's kind of a, that red portion, Mr. Brooks owns on both sides of Florida, but the other part, he owns one side of ETC, the other just no longer, nobody makes a difference. That's why we asked him to amend.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments for or against? If you'd like to be here. No other comments on that, we will close this public hearing. As we amended the agenda, we will bring that back when we get to the action items portion of the agenda. So if you would like to take action, you know, if you want to take action, as we get to the meeting. With no old business, we'll now move on into new business. This next item, I'm excited to have a chance to present tonight, and that's the consideration and approval of the purchase of property adjacent to Roper Park for the purposes of future park expansion. If you look on the image here, you can see where Roper Park is kind of in the middle. You can see the circles with ball fields. The two highlighted portions are the two parcels that we're discussing. Both parcels are owned by Mr. Hobby, Mr. Michael Hobby. One parcel is a 20.9 acre parcel, the other is a 36.67 acre parcel property combined total. Of course, I didn't have the combined total sitting in front of me. So we're gonna save 57 plus acres for the 20.9 and the 36.67 acre parcel property. We have been in conversations with Mr. Hobby now for several months, and I know Mr. Tatum had started a conversation with him a while back, and then staff has geared that over from that point in time and worked back and forth with trying to come to an agreement. The agreed-upon price that he has felt comfortable with would be in two separate transactions, one for each parcel. For property one, the 20.9 acre parcel would be for $500,000. Property two, which is the 36.67 acre tract, is for $622,615. The total for both transactions would be $1,122,615, all of which is in our current SLOSS account for the ability to expand Roper Park. I know here in all the conversations that we've had with anyone that has looked at our park, to try to figure out ways that we could expand and offer more space was the issue all the time. So this gives us a chance to almost triple the size of the park. Not every square inch of it is usable. It'll give us a chance to create some walking paths and some true recreation, outdoor recreation, along with the expansion of ball fields. One of the items that we've discussed for about a year was a new pool and for pickleball boards, but in order to do those things, it would cost us a field space. And we don't wanna move forward with starting that until we know that we're gonna be replacing the field space. And so it gives us a chance to do that. This is an area where Mr. Hobby has agreed on his end for the sub of the property and has actually signed and provided us with agreements and contracts for both. One would close before the end of 2024, the other would close at the beginning of 2025, to spread those out into two separate transactions as two different parcels of property. So at this time, I would like to ask the board prior to, to get to the table for discussion, for a motion to approve the purchase of both parcels of property for the combined total of $1,122,615, and authorizing myself as chairman to sign the contract and any other closing documents necessary to do so.
I'm very excited to make that motion.
I have a motion. I'll say.
I'll say.
All right, with a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions that you guys have got?
This passes buckles up round.
I think that's opened up a lot of opportunity.
Yes. That'll be great, to be able to do this.
All right, I made most of my comments before I presented the question for the motion. So with no further discussion or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes.
Mike Tatum's win. Give Chris one.
I was thinking. So that gives us an exciting opportunity to get right there. I think that gives us a chance to really provide a wonderful looking.
It is. It's awesome.
Right. Since we're on the money topic, we will move into item B and C, which will both be Ms. McDowell. I'll go ahead and introduce both, so she can move straight to the other. Item B is for budget amendments, and then item C is consideration and approval of financing on ambulance purchases that were approved at last month's meeting. So I would turn the floor over to Ms. McDowell.
Right. All right. So before you, you've had four different budget amendments. Throughout the year, we've received unbudgeted funds, revenues, which is grants, contributions, donations, interregimental proceeds. Generally, these ones are for a specific purpose or a project. And when that's the case, then we have to make room for these expenditures as well. So all four of these, again, have an unbudgeted revenue already to offset the expense. So we just need to, just let's get them, make those expenses.
So now, on the first one, there's a $720 amendment in the emergency management in EMA 3120. That was for contributions from other counties and then for the revenue and then food for the expenditure. That was for a class that was hosted from multi-counties, and that gives them the ability to pay that. Second's under fire operations. It was a trauma grant that was received. It was $5,962.51. And then the expenditure was medical supplies that matched that same dollar amount. Spirit Board had an ARCA grant that came in for $11,417, and the corresponding expenditure that goes with that. Should've stapled all these, sir. And then the next one's under the fire department, was another contribution, donations, $1,000, and then that went to supplies for that $1,000. That way, make sure that was there. The way our local act reads, anytime we increase the revenue on item, from what was budgeted revenue, we make sure that that is presented for the boards, that's considered each or revenue and expenditure. So they're flat mutual, there's no, thanks, expenditure.
Can I make a motion to approve all?
I knew you were about to say. That's what I was gonna say. So could I have a motion and approve all four at the same time?
Make a motion and we approve all four budget amendments as per session.
All right, I'll say. A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on that? All in favor?
The words "chief" right there.
None opposed, no comment. All right, so next is talking about the financing for ambulance purchases. That's random.
Okay, so on August the 22nd of 2024, we emailed 10 qualified banking firms soliciting bids to enter into a capital lease agreement for financing of two ambulances. The total amount of those ambulances that we requested financing was $784,900. We received back two bids from two different banks. One of the banks actually gave us two different options, but the first one was from Magnolia Bank with a 5.21% fixed interest rate, four years, monthly installments of $18,150. First payment beginning in November of 2024, no issuance or closing costs on that one. The second one was from Leasing Two Incorporated. That's the one with the two options. Option A is, was a 4.72% fixed interest rate for four years with monthly installments of $18,049, beginning, the first payment beginning December of 24. Same thing, no issuance or closing costs. Option B is 4.84% fixed interest rate, four years with annual installments of $211,262. The first payment on that one would be November of 24. Again, no issuance or closing costs. Finance's recommendation is to approve the capital lease agreement with Leasing Two Incorporated at a rate of 4.72% with monthly installments beginning in December of 24.
All right, so we have a staff recommendation, just for those that weren't at the meeting last month when we approved the purchase. What we, this was gonna be a SLOSS purchase. Rather than depleting the entire SLOSS account all at one time, we're gonna pay, I forgot how much was it we're gonna pay upfront?
$200 and something, $230,000.
$230,000 upfront. Finance the rest so that we didn't completely deplete the fire SLOSS account, so that we can continue for operations, but then have the ability to pay that off out of SLOSS. This particular option from a conversation we had earlier has no where we pay off penalties, so as that SLOSS account gets increased, we could go ahead and pay that off. But that way, we're not gonna see all of the funds that we ride off of the bat. I know with finance's recommendation for option A, a 4.72% fixed interest rate, four years, monthly installments, $18,049, with payments beginning in December of 2024. Do I have a motion? Would we follow finance's recommendation?
Seven. I'll say.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? I've cleared it up a little bit, but I know we've kind of done it in two different meetings since we didn't have the rates back yet for the last meeting. All right, well, with no questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
Thank you very much.
See, the months that she doesn't have her board, we find it to report, we still gotta find a way to make it. Next item on the agenda, under action items approval of minutes, we do have three different sets of minutes. All three members of the board were present for each of these meetings, so that way I can call for one motion for the approval. But one is for the regular meeting on August the 19th, one is for the executive session on August the 19th, and then the third one is a called meeting on September the 6th, 2024, where the military was approved. All of the minutes have been provided to each member of the board prior to tonight's meeting, so if you've had a chance to review those and the questions about those, do I have a motion to approve all minutes?
Make a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
I'll say. Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion, yes. All right, we will move into our rezones portion of the meeting. And our first rezone that we have tonight is a conditional use request, Condition CU 190748, from Ms. Jennifer Green, 1828, 4 Mile Church Road. It's a conditional use for a kennel, parcel number 068082001. Application was received by staff on June the 6th. The public hearing was held on August the 12th before planning. The planning commission, after reviewing the staff recommendation, the vote was for yes, zero, no, to recommend approval with conditions for the two acre tract. Conditions that were presented from the planning commission for us to consider were appointments will remain staggered so that you'll allow one or two clients at a time, with approximately eight clients per day, Monday through Friday, 5:30. Operating hours will not exceed 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday. The exterior of the commercial kennel or nonprofit kennel area shall be completely fenced or otherwise enclosed. When sunlight is likely to cause overheating or discomfort, sufficient shade will be provided to allow animals to have doors to protect themselves from the sun's direct rays. The animals shall be provided with access to shelter to allow them to remain dry during equal amount of weather. Those were the conditions that were presented for them to continue operating in existing kennel and business. With that, do I have a motion from the four others to remain in favor or opposed to the planning commission recommendation?
I make a motion to approve with the conditions. Second motion.
So I have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions as they were presented. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion, yes. Next rezone item that we have before us is RZ-190749, from Sean Caplet. It's on Hall Thorne Road, request to move 10 acres from Ag to small Ag on parcel 054097. Application was received by staff on June the 12th, requesting the change in land use classification. The intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, is to split the tract into two parcels for future homesites. Public hearing was held on 12th of August, where the planning commission voted for yes, zero, no, to recommend approval of the rezone request. With that, do I have a motion for the four?
Motion to approve.
A second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion, yes. Next rezone that we have on the agenda is RZ-190750, from Affordable Investments LLC, Anderson Mountain Road at the intersection of Browning Road. It's a request to move a 27.76 acre tract from Ag to small Ag on parcel 058044001. June the 25th, an application was received by staff from Mr. David Schouse on behalf of Affordable Investments, requesting the change. The intended purpose for the rezone request, if approved, is to split the tract into five parcels for farming and single-family dwellings. Public hearing was held on August the 12th, where the planning commission and staff recommended approval. The vote was for yes, zero, no. Do I have a motion for the four?
Motion to approve.
A second. Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes. Next rezone request is RZ-190752, from Ms. Susan Bozeman at 1707, 4 Mile Church Road. It's a request to move a 5.9 acre tract from Ag to Rural Residential. Application was received by staff on June the 28th, requesting the change in land use classification. The intended purpose of the rezone, if approved, is to sell a two and a half acre portion of the land. Public hearing was held on August the 12th regarding the application, where staff recommended approval, and the planning commission voted for yes, zero, no, for the approval of the rezone request. With that, do I have a motion for the four?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes. The next item is from the one we had a public hearing on at the beginning. That was the request for the downzoning from Mr. Anthony Gunter on behalf of Charles Dan Gunter, RZ-190805, requesting to move 1.32 acres from Rural Residential to Agricultural on parcel 037, 025, 001. We actually held the public hearing, so there's no point in going through that. The staff did recommend approval of the request. With that, do I have a motion from the four?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion case. The next that's not on the screen for us is the consideration and approval of the abandonment of a portion of Winston Road. I know we had public hearing at the beginning of this meeting to describe the conditions and the portion of the road that was there. If you are comfortable, I know it was the same night, you may have other research that you want to take a look at, but I would like to open the floor for a motion if the board would like to do so.
A motion that we approve.
So we have a motion to approve the abandonment of the portion of Winston Road and to leave that property to the, the quarter property office?
That's exactly what I said.
Is that it? You have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? That's the motion case. So that takes us through our meeting agenda, and then it brings us to our guest comments portion, and then we get a room with several guests that are here with us tonight, so I'd like to open the floor. Any guests that have comments you'd like to make? It's sir, Mr. Coogee.
Can I do it from here or you don't?
You can wherever you feel more comfortable.
I think you can hear my voice. Several things are happening right now is, is, uh... The properties or the land that's, uh, in the county versus in the city, sometimes you can't tell where you are, whether it's the county or the city. Philadelphia Road, we live in Hunter's Ridge, and Philadelphia Road, uh, the Kudzu is starting to come over the road. And I think that's in the city, since that's, that's where they're building that new subdivision.
The portion between 518 and Tumkin Road?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that, that is.
And, uh, and the other thing regarding that, that development, are there any plans? And I guess it would be, since the city's the one that approved it, is there going to be some kind of a traffic light on that road?
I'm not aware of, I know that the intersection comes back into a county parcel of property, and there have not, not been any requests made for the county to, to do anything with the traffic light there. That would be something that we would have to discuss with the city for sure.
Is that one issue? And another issue is the city of Jasper has gone up underwater. My water bill this past month is 300, 299.56 or something like that. And I realize my wife's got two gardens, but it's tripled what it was several months ago. And what I don't understand is, if you look at the new pricing on the city water, it goes up in terms of, I think it's, if you're over 10,000 gallons in a month, it's up to $7.58 or something like that per thousand gallons. Versus that in the city is about four something. So my question is, is I understand that the county provides water to the city? And, and do you charge it on a flat rate or do you charge it based upon how much water they buy?
So...
Oh, anyway.
I'll let you finish, and then I'll try to dive in.
Okay, all right. Because I was thinking, is there anything, if the city, I realize they're, they got a $20 million bill out there for their improved sewer system, which we don't use. We have nothing but septic tanks up in Hunter's Ridge. But, uh, I'm thinking if you're selling the water on a flat rate, and then they're doubling the price to us, is there anything that, suppose you charge them more for the, for the water, and that way we can get a tax break?
So, that's a good, I mean, it's a good question. Typically, we take public comments, but your, your questions that you're asking tonight fit with the number of calls and I'm sure if I'm getting them, you guys will probably get them as well. Walk-ins and confusing social media posts. To break it down in, in the first part of what you're describing, when we sell water to the city of Jasper, it is broken down based on what area of the county we get that water from. So if it's close to Cherokee County, it's the rate that we pay Cherokee County is the same rate that Jasper buys that water from. If it's Gilmer County, where they, where they pick it up, on one of the two lines that come in from Gilmer, then that's the rate. If it's Calhoun, then that's the rate. Those rates fluctuate. It ranges from, I think, 220 at the lowest in, uh, in, in, all the way up to, and I'm scared to say this number because I'm afraid, but I think that the most recent contract, 264 per thousand is the highest that we pay. And then we, we bill directly. So for $2.64 a thousand gallons, we didn't sell that water, depending on what part of the county. So you mentioned you're in Hunter's Ridge, that would be the Gilmer County water line that feeds that area. And that Gilmer County is around that, they, the 264. They do fluctuate on a tier, the first so many hundred thousand gallons are at one rate, and the next, and so it goes up from 221 up to 265, somewhere in that ballpark. So it's, it's not inside the plan. Sorry.
I'll take some of that 265.
I would too. Yeah. And in the number of calls we've gotten on it, um, and all, there's more than one issue that we, we kind of keep seeing all happening right now, and so staying focused on the city water at this point in time. Service delivery strategies are required by the state, and at the time that those strategies were developed, Jasper picked up that service delivery area prior to Pickens County having the ability to do it. And they've kind of maintained that, that, that area within their, um, outside the city limits, but within their service delivery area that they provide water to. I, um, try to be cautious, but I think really sometimes being blunt is, is probably the safer way. I don't understand the charging of different rates in a lot of parts of our county. The water line that feeds your community comes in right next to your community. If they come from the city of Jasper, it comes from Jones Mountain Road. And do a tank that's in your community to service the rest of the area. So I don't fully understand it. I don't, um, I know it's their decision to make on setting their rates, but I do think the law kind of defines areas where that's at, and I think it's something that we need to explore because some of the calls that I've received in, in relation to this particular topic are residents that don't have a voice because we're the people they elect to represent them, but then they're billed from somebody that they have no voice and they can't vote, but it's the only person that can provide the water. So, yes, we need to explore any and every possible way we can to try to fight on behalf of unincorporated residents that, that are getting billed at different rates, or at least get an explanation as to the reason for it. I know there may be some areas where they have to add additional lines, but other areas where that line feeds right on us. So I think as, as the board commissioners, as one member of the board commissioners, I agree wholeheartedly that we've got to find a way to come up with a solution. Probably will involve speaking with, with Jordan Davis and meeting with council from there to try to determine, you know, an understanding of, of the legal side and to work closely with Jasper to try to get an understanding as to why they, they do that. I know that in addition to water rates, I think there's been a tsunami all at one time, and, and people that don't understand the difference between city and county. We've, we've received comment after comment about us increasing taxes. We're not. We're rolling back again for the seventh or eighth straight year this year. It is a consistent rollback, I think 2016 was the last property tax miller rate increase in Pickens County. And we're going to continue to fight to do that year after year. That's not something that our board commissioners has done and has no intention to do. I do know that some people's billed amounts are more, but it means the property is valued more. Plus, last year, we all received an HRTG grant from the state that none of us got this year. So that affected some of those numbers. We've, you know, we hear the comments about us increasing taxes when we're doing all we can to fight to try to keep them down. There have been some comments about rezoning decisions that the planning commission and different things on different homes that are, that are not the county's. So I would urge people to kind of pay attention that there are different forms of government. You have the county government, you have the city of Jasper's government, you have Talkin' Oaks government, Nelson's government. To try to pay attention to, to those particular things before diving on and trying to comment. I know that I've seen several that have tried to defend and tried to explain that's not the county, that's the city. But it is challenging when what we stand for, which is low density growth in the areas that we can keep at a pace that we can keep up with versus high density growth. I think our board has shown a commitment to that repeatedly, trying to do all we can to keep the miller rate down and fighting consistently to reduce the miller rate every time. This was a, a year where counties all around us started raising miller rates because I think they're fearful of what's coming in the future, and we held firm to say we're going to continue to roll back and, and do all we can to try to fight for, for the residents that are there. And those type of activities that we do, our water, we're, we're doing what we can to reinvest anything that comes in in addition to what our water customers pay. None of that's going into our general fund. Every penny of our water funds go back into reinvestment on improving and enhancing water lines. So our goal is to try to continue and make that better. And I think one of the reasons I'm rambling on my answer to you is because we are so passionate and our staff work so hard for all those things that for another group to make decisions, for us to complain, that does get very frustrating. And you want to, you want to be respectful and understand that they, they have a job and they're elected to do their job in their area, and I understand that. But when people can't see the difference between one and the other, I think it becomes very challenging for us to, to, to not speak up and say, that's not what we stand for. That's not what we got elected to do. We believe that we are accountable. I know I do, and I know from meeting with, with both of these gentlemen, we all share that same belief. We're going to fight for our citizens. We want our citizens to thrive. We want our businesses to thrive. We want all these different things to take place. And so we do take that personal. I do believe that we owe our citizens the ability for us to try to fight. Whether we have a fight or not, I don't know at this point, but to try to find a way that we make that to where those rates are favored. And, and that's my one commitment I will make to you and to anybody else that's watching and listening, and I'll try to present to the board anything I could find for them to, to consider. Yes, sir?
Uh, I do want to comment, and I think that the county, you included, is doing a good job. Uh, I think taxes are, are very reasonable, and I think that you've done a good job in that regard. And it's just, overall, I know there's, as evidenced by the amount of traffic coming up this way from Atlanta in the evening and going south in, in the morning, uh, we're getting some pretty heavy population growth up here. And I just, I look at it and I cringe because I came up, we came up from Marietta back 29 years ago. But if, if, uh, one way I think that might help the city, uh, I don't know who's handling their financial management, but, uh, when Johnny Weaver was the mayor, they used to charge a, uh, not a land use. If you were going to build a new subdivision, you had to pay an impact fee. And from what I understand right now is the city doesn't charge an impact fee. Well, they just had to, I think they're shelling out about $20 million for a new sewer system. Maybe they ought to think about charging impact fees again to all the new developments that are taking place. Fire department, I, I don't see any reason why the city can't talk to the county and say, hey, take over my fire department. Right? Same thing with the police force. I, I, I just think that since we work so close together, that maybe it's to everybody's benefit if some of these service areas come together.
And I, I appreciate your comment on that. I, I, we, we approached them three years ago, I think, talking about fire. We've never actually had conversations on the police. A lot of that requires both parties to have an interest in, in doing, and that may be something that they're, they're willing to, to take a look at, but we'll definitely follow up with them. I appreciate you, you coming to make your comments.
Anyway, keep up the good work, all of you. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I would like to touch on something George pointed out. We have so many new people coming into this area. The city of Jasper zip code mailing route goes in a whole lot of places. A lot of the new people are calling all the time with confusion about whether they're in the city of Jasper or not, especially with their tax hype that they're reading in the newspaper. So I would hope that the Pickens County project could maybe do something to explain that a little bit better to people, but the people that haven't lived here for years like we have, they really don't understand if they are or if they're not. So anything that we can do for public communication, there's a lot of people out there that just don't know.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have one more.
Just to everybody, get out and vote.
Good advice.
Very much so. Well, thank you, thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you for the comments. Thank you for, for all that you do. I know we've got many of our staff members that wash their tails off and stay late on meetings, so thank y'all for what you do. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Somebody.
Second, all in favor?